And you're good to go.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for making it tonight. Welcome to the December or October special meeting of the Disabilities Commission for Santa Monica. I want to start by doing a attendance roll call. Commissioner Antonini?
Present.
Commissioner Azariah?
Yeah.
Commissioner Henler?
Here.
Commissioner Link Ellis?
Here.
Commissioner Kazmea Dodge?
Present.
Commissioner Elliott? Gosh, I don't have the rest of the names. Do you have the list in front of you, Noah? I just know that's everybody.
Yes, give me one second. So there is Commissioner Sussman, still not with us, Commissioner Block, Nicholas, and Blanc.
Correct.
And that would be it, yeah.
Thank you. Again, thanks, everyone, for making it. Just just a reminder, we have stream text. If you need captions, the link's in the agenda. And then there was the ad hoc letter we'll cover later. That's also linked in the agenda. I want to start with our first part of the agenda, Special Agenda Item 1A, Overview of Cyber Security Training Due October 24, 2022. Let me pull up the information. Just want to check, did everyone here have a chance to complete the cybersecurity training?
I did.
I'm gonna do it the Monday. I, it has to be before then, wait. So I write it's only 30 minutes, so I think I'll do it like tomorrow. If the link works.
I suggest you do it sooner than later because I still haven't been able to get in. They still need to reset my password to let me into the training. So I've been trying to do it for a week, and I haven't been able to.
Yeah, that's typical, isn't it?
I had a password issue, but I called that number and they fixed it right away.
And you were able to get in?
Yeah.
Great.
I'm just waiting to have a response to my numerous phone calls.
Yeah, and I had to call in as well and get them to
reset.
Resolve my issue. How much is it? Just want to reiterate, it's really important to get it by the deadline, or else it'll it'll cause some barriers to participation. So just make a make an effort to start that earlier.
Yeah.
I did have a question about it because I, when I, I guess, was appointed, like, last month, I I did the cybersecurity training, but is does that one not count for? Is it like a new year, then it has to be redone?
Yeah, it's it's the new one. You got an email, you should have got an email from my SMI at Santa Monica, like, I think around October 3, and in there you'll have the hyperlink. It's a new one.
Okay.
I didn't get that email. I did not get the email.
I paste, I copied and pasted it to the bottom of the agenda I sent out to the whole commission. So you can also just look at that email that I sent earlier this month.
Okay, thank you, Noah.
Are there any any questions we haven't covered about the cybersecurity training? It's super important. So just want to give give some space to make sure everyone's clear on how to complete it.
I think it might be a good idea if we ask people to just shoot you an email and let you know when they've completed it. So we know where we are.
Okay. Yeah, if you could send me an email when you complete it, that would be helpful. And or if you, if I could just go around, if anyone wants to tell me that they've completed, and I could take notes now as well. Or actually, who has not completed it? So I can expect or look for an email?
I haven't.
Okay.
I have not.
Okay.
I haven't.
And Catherine, did you, Kazmea Dodge, did you complete it yet?
Well, I think I did. I just did like three days ago. The, I don't think there's any new ones since then. But it was a fast one, you know, it was like maybe it was less than an hour. Is that the one?
I believe so. Did you get an email from my SMI?
Yeah, I got it on my thing and did it right away. So I didn't go back on tonight, but it's only been a couple of days. There hasn't been a new one since then.
No, 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 it was the one from October 3.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I hadn't been able to get on. I did finally, the minute I got on my account, I did it.
Perfect.
Did they get anything out of it? There's something you're supposed to print out?
I did not print out anything.
Could you could you explain or introduce yourself? Because we're supposed to send an email to, and I'm not quite sure who to, what is? Are you the chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Elliott.
Oh, you're Commissioner Elliott, okay. And I wanted to know where to send it, and I wasn't sure.
And Commissioner Alice, I did receive an email that says you you completed the training.
Me?
Oh, no, I got it when I completed it, sorry. So you you do get a confirmation that you completed it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Do you get your confirmation as soon as you've done it? I know this is sort of a moot point, but you'll get it when you're done with it, they tell you that you completed, okay.
Yeah, you'll get an email from the my SMI that says training is completed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, if there are any more questions on the cybersecurity, or we can keep moving.
I think we're good.
Okay, Special Agenda Item 1B, Commissioner Blanc is not here, so I'm gonna keep moving on from that one. Staff administrative items of 5A, Reports from Ad Hoc Committees and Liaisons and Discussion and Possible Action on Reestablishing and/or Establishing Additional Ones. The first one, the Ad Hoc Committee on Digital Equity from Chair Elliott and Vice Chair Link Ellis. And Commissioner Link Ellis, it's, we should do a screen share, right?
Yeah, please.
I'm gonna share my screen with a copy of the Digital Equity Ad Hoc Letter that we prepared to discuss for this meeting. Can everyone see my screen, okay?
Yeah.
Should we just go ahead and read it?
Sure.
So I have it dated October 7, 2022, to the City of Santa Monica. Re, the Ad Hoc Committee on Digital Equity. Dear Honorable Mayor Sue Himmelschmidt, Santa Monica City Council, and the City Manager. The Disabilities Commission continues meeting virtually to develop recommendations on city policy impacting access to public services from the cradle to grave. I am reaching out on behalf of the Disabilities Commission to provide recommendations to improve the accessibility of digital spaces for all Santa Monica residents, including people with disabilities. The COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic shifted many critical services from physical spaces into digital spaces. Unfortunately, many residents have faced accessibility barriers to Santa Monica's digital spaces and digital content. For example, accessibility challenges with video conferencing applications, web pages, mobile applications, and documents. The best time to address these accessibility issues would have been prior to the pandemic. The second best time is today. Equitable access to digital spaces is critical in supporting the well-being of Santa Monica residents and complying with the American with Disabilities Act. The Department of Justice recently announced its intent to update Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act to include web accessibility standards. And if you notice, the text is blue there. It's because I link to more information, the source showing that the Department of Justice is intending to update Title II. So if you'll notice some hyperlinks throughout the article where I link, where I kind of cite what where I'm getting the information from. Governments, universities, and other organizations often rely on the latest version of the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines when creating policies for web accessibility. Creating inclusive digital spaces is an ongoing iterative process that requires feedback from people with disabilities. In other words, nothing about us without us. Input from people with disabilities should always be included at the beginning of the planning process in creating digital spaces and digital content. The Disabilities Commission recommends the city manager and city council take the following steps to improve equitable access to digital digital spaces. One, create and hire Chief Accessibility Officer position. This position needs to be created to ensure accessibility for all residents is a core value within the city. Duties include managing efforts to ensure the city's digital environment is accessible to people with disabilities. The city manager and city council must commit to changing the culture to demonstrate that digital accessibility is required, not a nice to have. Two, create a dedicated Microsoft Teams accessibility channel. This would be a great way for everyone in the city to learn together by sharing best practices, posing questions, and reviewing alternative text, alt text for images. The Microsoft Teams channel will also serve as a repository of helpful files, links, and resources to improve the accessibility of digital content. The Santa Monica Disabilities Commission has curated a list of helpful resources and is available for consultation to support the accessibility-focused Microsoft Teams channel. Three, increase city engagement in digital equity efforts at the county, state, and federal level. The cost of broadband internet access and devices remain a barrier for many residents with disabilities. It is critical to improve efforts to leverage existing resources to reduce the digital divide. For example, promoting the Affordable Connectivity Program to Santa Monica residents and engaging in Los Angeles County Digital Equity efforts and statewide California broadband for all efforts. You'll notice there's a lot of hyperlinks that that just, I can maybe talk about those later, but I'll go through the rest of the article. Four, implement hybrid city council and commission meetings, meetings with a virtual and in-person option. Since the pandemic started, many residents with disabilities have been unable to fully participate in city council and commission meetings. In many cases, residents had the skills necessary to participate. The digital platforms used and/or lack of accommodations prevented them from participating. Put simply, the lack of digital and/or physical accessibility was the barrier to participation, not the disability. Five, add alt text for images on the city website and social media channels. The city currently uses HootSuite, which has a scheduling feature, allowing the public information officer to add alt text to scheduled posts across the city's social media platforms. Six, city council vote to formally support the Websites and Software Applications Accessibility Act in both the United States Senate S4998 and House of Representatives, HR 90210. 21. This legislation would establish a clear, enforceable accessibility standard and establish a technical assistance center and advisory committee committee to provide advice and guidance on accessible websites and applications. The commission would like to thank the council and city staff for always keeping the interests of people with disabilities in mind during planning and execution of city projects and objectives. The Disabilities Commission believes all Santa Monica residents should have full and equal access and a voice in city decision-making, which promotes belonging and equity in our community. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Santa Monica Disabilities Commission, and I sign it.
Alex, could you please explain to people what add all text means?
Yes, so every, if a lot of people use a screen reader to navigate a website, and so when they get to a picture, you need to describe that picture with text. So maybe it's, it could be picture of the logo of Santa Monica. So you have to add alt text that says, this is the Santa Monica logo, so that when you use your screen reader and you get to that point, it'll say, picture of logo of Santa Monica. Often, they don't add alternative text, so when your screen reader, it'll say picture. And so if you're, if you're using a screen reader, you have no context, you have no idea what you should be looking at. And there's, there's an art and a science. Some people are really good at writing alt text. It has to be descriptive and succinct. And one of the benefits also is that text will come up in search results, which can help our website get more traffic, so people can better find what they're looking for. So they call that improving searchability. So there, with a lot of these improvements we want for accessibility, it'll make it better for everybody.
Do you think, is it appropriate to put next to it, in parentheses, audio description? So that people understand what it is?
Yeah, there. Yeah, there, that was some feedback I also got is, is some people are not as familiar with what alt text is. I tried to include a hyperlink and a link to the city uses a social media management software where they schedule posts. And they have a feature where you can write the alt text in advance and schedule it. So you can write, you know, a lot of posts at once and and manage it that way. It's more easy to manage. But where, where, where should we add that language?
I would just say right after the hyperlink, add all text. I would put parentheses, audio description.
Okay.
I think people will understand it then. Even if you said screen reader, it wouldn't mean anything.
Okay. And just for six, there's a few senator, a senator and someone from the House just introduced some legislation. It's been in the news around accessibility, because this is a big issue. And the key thing about this legislation is it would make the accessibility standard clear. It's, it's not, it's not 100% clear. People generally follow the Website Content Accessibility Guidelines, which we had a speaker, Joe Devon, right?
Yeah.
To talk about this. But it would be helpful for, you know, not just government, but small businesses for everybody. If you had a clear standard saying, if I do this, I'll know I meet the standard. And that's part of of the spirit behind this legislation. A couple other links is. Oh, go ahead.
I just want to say one thing about the ADA is that these are minimum requirements, not maximum. So if people tell you, well, we are complying, they might be complying, but they might not be compliance plus. They're giving you the bare, the bare minimum.
Yeah, that's why I'm hoping we can be, the city can be more proactive in digital accessibility, so we can make it better than just a bare minimum for ADA. And we're not reacting to the threat of legislation or the threat of, you know, complying with some rules that come out and we're, you know, hustling. If we have, you know, a proactive approach, we can get above just meeting the minimum standard.
It's cheaper to do it in advance rather than later.
Yes, and and as we're building new things, we build them with accessibility in mind. It's harder to retrofit the accessibility in than to build it from the beginning.
Can I mention something?
Yes.
This accessibility is pretty, is, is like one of the main things in any kind of disability or issue, but it's the long term and it's the act, it's the actual rather than the than not actual. In terms of, you know, being able to like, you can say accessible, but then, once the, once the person is like, is taking their seat in whatever they're pursuing, they there's a lot of room for for not holding up, you know, not holding up in a, in a in a forthright way. Personally, I've had that experience. And like, for instance, should I give a for instance, or?
Sure.
Okay, for instance, Santa Monica College. Well, Santa Monica College has a huge, big, very active during the day Disabled Students Club or Union. But I've, I've known professors to go directly against what they have been trying to uphold in this so-called office called Disabled Student Services. And makes it a difficult thing. It makes it like hard to climb that ladder when you're when you, when, when people are like going up against you and like with my thing, it's not a, a, a visible disability. I'm not saying it's any worse or any better than a dis either or apples and oranges, but what I, I don't know the experience of somebody physically handicapped or physically, I don't like that word handicap, but so, so this, so the Disabled Students Office might as well be called the Liars and unupstanding citizens. That's what I would call them. And the same thing happened at West LA College, which is a state school. So I, I mean, I went to, first I went to Sarah Lawrence, then I went to Berkeley and got my degree from Berkeley, but I was taking arts classes, like some, some history, music history, and some dance choreography classes. And people were mean to me.
Excuse me, Commissioner Henler?
Very mean.
Commissioner Henler, sorry, this is Noah. Unfortunately, we can only discuss what's in the agenda.
I know, I'll go back to that. I'll look at it.
Yeah. So it's just what's on the agenda, and right now we're at this ad hoc letter. Thank you.
Sorry.
I wanted to just talk a little bit, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask and see if you or Noah Mendoza know, five or six years ago, the city had promised wide, free, robust broadband to the entire city of Santa Monica. And a lot of money was allocated towards it, and somehow it fell off the deep end. Does anybody know what happened to it, or what happened to that movement or their project?
That I do not have any information on. I can ask staff and come back with more information at a later time, but I don't, I don't know unless Alex, you know, anything.
I believe it was called CityNet. I can only, you know, know what I've Googled, but I'm, it's also topical because there may be some, some funds available from the state or federal level for infrastructure that may be able, they may be able to pick up where they left off and make sure everyone has access to broadband. But we can maybe talk about that more when we get to the later part of the agenda. Just wanted, speaking of access to broadband being a barrier, there's a great data visualization that shows by census tract, folks who are having, you know, some barriers to accessing internet. So that's kind of a data point to support this. And there's some spots in Santa Monica where, you know, it should be as close to 0% as as possible, and it's higher than that, a lot higher. And then I just linked to the federal, county, and statewide efforts to address the digital divide or divide in access to high-speed internet and devices, because a lot of folks, it's more important than ever for telehealth, for work, for education, to have access to high-speed internet and devices. And a lot of, a lot of folks across our state and in our city even. That was some feedback I got going to other commission meetings, is there's a number of those communities that don't have broadband.
There's an organization called Digital Something. Do you know that? Digital, it's a, it's a nonprofit that that works to get people set up and digital, gosh, divide, no, digital. Alex, I was just thinking of you because you've done a little more research.
Yeah, there, there's a number of organizations that are helping people to sign up for the free benefit and also that offer low-cost or refurbished devices. Because part of the benefit is you can get money towards a device. So there's organizations that are offering very low-priced laptops, and you can use your benefit. They're taking every approach to get people connected to high speed because it's so critical post-COVID.
Yeah.
One question on the first recommendation about creating the position of the Chief Accessibility Officer. Did you have a sense for, I guess, who that position would report to?
Yeah, that, that's tough. It's like, Microsoft is probably the best example of this. I've seen there's other examples in government. It would be leadership. It's unclear if the best place would be like with the Chief Information Officer or just in, you know, the executive type level. Yeah, and we also have like the Diversity and Equity Officer here, so maybe that's a potential. Just the, what I got, the, the feedback I got from going to a lot of commission meetings is there, they, they're hearing a lot that positions dedicated to accessibility are under-resourced. So I, kind of the spirit behind this is, you know, they need to show an effort that this is a priority by hiring someone who's dedicated to this work, because there's a lot of work around digital accessibility. And I was thinking of modeling after the Microsoft or other government environments. But do you have thoughts about the best place?
I do not. I was more curious to get your thoughts on that. I suppose that it ultimately would be up to the city council to I, I do not. I was more, yeah, curious to get your thoughts on that. I suppose that it ultimately will be up to the city council to determine that, right?
Yeah, I, I've seen it in, in multiple at executive level because every project has a disability component. Not just digital spaces, but physical spaces. So that would be appropriate. I've other, I've seen other environments where it's under the Chief Information Officer because they have to check every application and make sure it's compliant and, and built with an accessibility perspective. Um, and I've also seen it kind of in the, uh, diversity equity in inclusion space. Um, so those are three possibilities. But I think I, I just, the, the culture needs to be changed that this is a priority. Um, not just kind of a, you know, a check-the-box thing. They need to really focus some human resource efforts around this. Cause it's only going to be a bigger and bigger ask over time, especially when the updated, Title II regulations come into play.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question. What about the other general public in Santa Monica? I mean, they don't complain that there's no broad broadband in Santa Monica?
It's, oh, go ahead.
Well, I, we recently found out in, during the pandemic that, um, that internet was such a big issue, especially in the city. So before that, I never realized it, but, so I mean, the general public must have a group of people who are actually bringing something forward other than disability information. If there is a group, we could work with them.
Yeah, this, uh, it's, it's generally, uh, lower-income people with disabilities disproportionately lack access. Some data I've seen suggests seniors. Um, this is not only a Santa Monica issue, this is across counties and states, but, generally I've seen, uh, themes of lower-income people with disabilities, seniors tend to have lower rates of devices and access to high-speed internet. It was a big issue in the LAUSD, um, with a lot of students, you know, when all, uh, homework and things went virtual. That was a barrier. A lot of libraries give out hotspots. There's been all these kind of efforts to, uh, close the divide. I, I think I was at a Housing Commission Two meeting where, uh, there were a lot of people from the blind, uh, visual impairment community in Santa Monica that were not having access to broadband. But the number's higher than I, than I thought, um, just at the state level. But it's hard to get like the specific, like how many people in, in Santa Monica, that, that data's hard to get, but it's, it's higher than, than zero.
I just think we have to speak from the perspective of the disabilities community. I don't think it's within our purview to discuss the entire city. So I imagine that's something that would have to go through the city manager or directly to the city council.
And, and sometimes to use the computer, you might need some additional assistive technology. Um, so there's not just the laptop plus the broadband. You may need an adaptive mouse, adaptive keyboard, screen reading software, uh, voice to tech, like a number of additional things that, or have costs. And you need the websites and applications you're accessing to be accessible to those technologies and that's one, a huge barrier. Most websites and applications are, are not accessible enough.
Well, one, I mean, if they can make this available and, uh, do you think that they're, are they available in the library?
I don't think so. I mean, part of the problem with the libraries being closed was people who would use the library computers had no access to them. And then in the beginning, when they started to come out of the pandemic, my understanding was they only opened the first floor, but all the computers were on the second floor. All of those people were completely disenfranchised during the entire pandemic.
Yeah, I know that LA city libraries have a number of programs where they'll, they lend out hotspots and I believe Chromebooks. Um, but I'm not sure Santa Monica libraries, but that's something we should find out. But one, one thing that I have found out, which is why I put it in the recommendation, is not enough people are aware of the benefits that exist. So if you receive, um, SSI or General Leaf or certain benefits, you're eligible for the Affordable Connectivity Benefit, which gives you thirty dollars towards broadband. And now a number of providers in the city have a thirty-dollar plan. So essentially you get internet for free and, um, just when I went to other meetings, people weren't aware of it. So, you know, people were saying, I can't afford internet and I, you know, a lot of people brought up, are you aware of this program? And they weren't. So part of it is just increasing awareness of what exists. And then there's going to be holes. Um, and I think there'll be holes around, uh, access to assistive technology. A part of the approach of just being aware of, of what exists at the, the county, city, state level.
Um, there, they were giving away, away free Chromebooks at SMC. Sort of way toward the beginning of, uh, of the pandemic.
All through Santa Monica because, uh, you know, um, Santa Monica now, but unified, every student got a Chromebook.
Yeah, and I think.
You use for school. So a parent couldn't come on and leave a message for a teacher. It was only for that student in that school.
Right, right.
I think some of the students who couldn't afford internet, the schools also gave the hotspot.
Yeah, there, there's a number of, of hotspot programs. And also there's the, you can get both the Affordable Connectivity Benefit and the, um, free cellphone, um, program. So some folks were not aware that you could do both.
Is that through the California Telephone Access Program?
Uh, California Lifeline Program, you can get.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, that, that's the, the one I was referring to, to, to get the free cellphone with a plan. That's California Lifeline. Uh, Catherine?
Also, if you, if your desk gives you a captioned telephone, if you have multi-disabilities, then they will give you a cellphone and other, other things.
Yeah, we, um, no, so they, they have, folks should have access to all three and make sure they're aware to get all three. Uh, um, Commissioner Kazmea Dodge?
Yeah, I just had a question. Um, on, is, is that list that you gave us, you know, of all these, you, where you can get everything? You know, you sent us the whole list where we can get a cellphone, the thirty dollars off of this, of this. Is that on our, is that on the city disability website?
Uh, I have, I've sent that information to them. It hasn't made it to the website, which is a little frustrating, but, that's a key part of number two on here is they need a place where all this information lives, that everyone in the city is aware of and can easily share. And I, I do this at my day job. I, I have a, a place where this stuff lives and I don't have a place at the city. I, I, uh, actually the, the library posted some of this. But it, it didn't make it to the accessibility page on the Santa Monica website. And they have, we haven't got a Teams page yet, but, um, that's like a best practice. They're like, there's a number of organizations that create a team channel that has all these, uh, hub of information for people with disabilities, such as how to get free internet, uh, information on accessibility settings, assistive technology. So that, that's a key one. That's a no, to me a no-brainer that, and we can help because we are, once they make that channel, we can share all the information to put on that channel. Is there anything that, uh, you think needs to be changed before I sub, we submit, our ad hoc submits this? I have the one text to add audio descriptions to number five. Are there any recommendations on improvements?
I think it's an excellent letter. I think you hit all the high points.
Yeah, it's a great letter. Kudos.
It was hard because things change over time, so I added things and, and took things out because, you know, things happen at the state, federal level. Um, I had it ready a, a while ago, but some things changed after, you know, the, the climate change. One thing I'm thinking internally is I almost want to, uh, share this twice. Once, if, if, you know, we, we pass a motion, um, now, and then once they put in the new city council after the election. Cause like, I'm, I'm, this is the mayor Sue Himmelrich, but she's, um, only going to be there for a month or two. Well, what do you guys think about, uh, sharing this twice? I, with the, with the second version would have an updated date, an updated mayor.
I think it's, I think it's an excellent idea. I really do. Lost in the shuffle of the transition.
Yeah, and then some, some city council and the city manager may see it twice. Um, but I, I think we're so close to an election that I, I want to make sure they, they hear about this. Um, Catherine? Kazmea Dodge?
Yeah, definitely. Uh, I would say, you know, send it to the third person or the fourth, however many times. It, we can't send it enough and it can be read over and over, you know? The one thing I, the only one little teeny thing I wanted to point out, you don't have to change it if you don't want it, but it just sort of jarred me and it's the very beginning. When you say from the cradle to grave, to me it should be from the cradle to the grave. That's all.
No, thank you. Yeah, that reads better.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll add a, a the to the cradle to the grave there. And I'm going to add to number five in parentheses, audio descriptions. Are there any, any other feedback before we, we start to make motions and things?
I think we're good.
Okay, so I make a motion to submit the ad hoc committee's letter on digital equity to the mayor, city council, and city manager twice. Once following this meeting and once following the induction of the new city council members. With the updated language, cradle to the grave on the first paragraph. And on number five, in parentheses, audio descriptions. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Um, all right, we're going to go to a roll call vote. No, Noah, did I follow? Am I good?
Uh, yes, you're good. I'm sorry, I'm taking some notes. Who seconded?
Link Ellis.
Yes, awesome, thank you.
Bye.
I'll update the date when I, when I, for the second submission. Um, can I get a re-second?
I'll second it again.
Okay, um, I'm going to go around roll call vote, just based on how it reads on my screen. Commissioner Link Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Antonini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kazmea Dodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Azaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Handler?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott, yes. So it passes six-zero. Um, so, Noah can, can use, email me on, on how to, um, when I make those text changes, how we can submit these, this, the first round, and then I'll submit it the second round af, in December or so.
Yeah, definitely. You can connect with me after this, but pretty much you can send it to me and I'll put it on official letterhead and send it to all of the city council members, uh, as well as, uh, BCC, all of this commission.
Appreciate it, thank you. So that, that, and does that, how does that, does that sunset this committee?
Uh, yes, so, oh. Uh, ad hocks are supposed to be, uh, a time-limited committee. Uh, they are not ongoing, so if you have completed the task or the timeframe in which you had set this, uh, ad hoc in, then yes.
So would, would it sunset when I submit it the second time or now?
Second time.
Yeah, second time.
I want to keep it on point.
You can always, uh, recreate a similar ad hoc, um, at any later point in time.
Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. That, that was a good convo. Um, and, and we'll, we'll, you'll get a letter soon with the official, uh, letter on letterhead and hopefully we get a good response. Five, double I, um, Ad hoc Committee on Mobility Issues, Commissioner Block, Commissioner Kazmea Dodge?
Um, I don't have anything on mobility.
That, this is something I wanted to talk about. This, this has been open a really long time. Just so we keep things, you know, within the regulations. I'd, I'd like to recommend we sunset this one and at the next meeting reopen it. Or if you have a specific thing within mobility you want to work on, sunsetting and, and starting a new one, because I just,
Oh, yeah.
We, we run into trouble if we keep these open too long.
Good, good, go for it, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to sunset the Ad hoc Committee on Mobility Issues. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, all right, uh, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Link Ellis?
Yes.
Have it go away, expire.
Have it go away, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Link Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Antonini?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Kazmea Dodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Azaria?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Handler?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott, yes. Okay, so we're going to sunset that one. This is definitely a topic we want to keep talking about and have an ad hoc on. We just need to be specific and reopen it. So we stay, so we don't break the rules. Okay, um, five, three, Ad hoc Committee examining the state of the accessibility of recreation programs. Um, Commissioner Azaria, do you have any updates on that one?
I don't. I, uh, I was going to go through the, um, I don't know who sent me. Yeah, no, I don't have any update. I'm still going through the websites to see what's available.
Um, this is, we got some feedback on this too. We have to come up with like a specific timeframe and deliverable. So that's something maybe to, to reach out to, uh, Commissioner Nicholas and Sussman about what the deliverable, whether it's a letter or whatever, whatever, um, and, and kind of a timeframe. Because I just want to make sure we don't, you know, keep it open too long and start breaking the, the rules. But we can always close it and reopen if, if it's something, but, at the next meeting, if, if you could think about a deliverable and a timeframe, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
All right, five, um, four, new ad hocks is, um, just want to open it up. Is there anyone interested in starting an ad hoc?
Yeah, I would. One second. Like the most important part of the meeting and the radio goes on. Okay, so, yes, I would. But if anybody wants to join me.
What is the project? What is the project?
Well, it had something to do with, I haven't thought, you can tell I haven't thought it out really further than, much than this, but. Well, I think it has to do with the, you know, the schools that I mentioned, the, the city school and the state school and different kinds, different kinds of things that with objectivity, you know, I could use my own experience. And I just delineate what happened to me at those schools. Which, so, and that's it. Just, you know, that disability can't be seen doesn't mean it's not there. And it's sort of, it, it's a, it's a, the dynamic between the professor and the student who happens to be, have a disability is, is one of, it's, it's like, it's, it's a little bit scary because they think, well, the students, you know, disabled, well, then, you know, maybe I, I'll just, you know, like stick them somewhere where they won't get much experience or get their feet wet or.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure, yeah.
I under, see, and the disability commission, we're, we're not supposed to ever deal with our personal issues. It's supposed to be something for the disability commission and, and maybe if you've spent a little more time on the ad hoc, how you, you know, what you really wanted to do with it.
Yeah.
Um, you could, maybe at the next meeting, it, it would be clear, but if it's a personal thing for you, um, we can't deal with it. The, the commission isn't supposed to deal with that. That's not our purview. And I would like to bring up at the same time that it is something that the city wanted us to have as a purview where each of us responded individually to people with issues like your issue. You know, that you would be able to call up somebody in the commission or text or whatever, and that they would be able to help you out with your issue. So I, I'm just sort of suggesting that we do those two kinds of different things to see if we can sort this out. That's all. I just wanted to suggest that.
Yeah. And I like to add, our, our, our five C is talking about our goals and priorities. So maybe that discussion can help you target in your ad hoc. Maybe it's school accessibility or improving disabled student services at local schools or something. Maybe, maybe there's some from five C that'll help you narrow down your target.
Yeah.
There has to be a timeline to it.
Yeah, and a deliverable.
Yeah, deliverable, yeah.
What is deliverable? I, I didn't get that. Deliverable, you mean? In terms of your, your argument or your?
No, whatever, whatever project you're trying to do as an ad, whether it's a letter, like sending a letter to the council or it's establishing some kind of liaison with another group. So it has to be, it has to have an ad hoc, I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump in Alice, but has to have a beginning, a middle, and an end. It's, it's something that's very specific. It's not an open agenda item. It's just a little different. There can be open agenda items, but not, in, in this case, we've been sunsetting almost every ad hoc. If we're not able to get it done within two meetings, three meetings, just because it's been so hard with the pandemic and on Zoom and, you know. So I agree with Alex. Let's, let's wait till we get to five C and maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Come up with something.
Wait till we get to the, I'm sorry, the hearing on this thing is really bad. You were saying to get to where?
Agenda item five C, we're going to talk about our goals and priorities.
Okay, five C.
So I'm, I'm going to keep the agenda moving. Five B, discussion and possible action on establishing liaisons for Santa Monica boards and commissions. I just, when we talked to the city, I just want to put on folks radar as maybe we have a liaison for city council. Just to have someone monitor what, someone who has interests, who monitors city council and kind of reports back to the commission those key things in our purview and so we can talk about it and, and be in sync with what's going on in city council so we, we can remain topical and pertinent. So just want to put that on radar. If you're thinking about it being a liaison, that's a good one. And then just another commission that was, I believe it was the planning commission was suggested as a good one. We may want to have a liaison and the housing commission. So tho, those were three commissions I just wanted to put on, on the commission's radar. For now or for a future meeting, if you're thinking about being a liaison. We already have one liaison for the human services commission, which is a good one. But it was suggested, city council, planning, and housing would be additional ones we may want to have representation at.
I, I've been the liaison for the peer, Santa Monica peer board for a long time, just monitoring their agenda. And the, the minutes, the agenda that came out today, there was a link to all the changes that are going to go involved in the renovation. It was 1,500 pages long, so they said that's why they weren't going to print it out. I'm not sure whether any of the disability commission's recommendations over the last 10 years have made it in or not. But I have a feeling that, you know, whatever it is, the coastal commission has overridden whatever our, you know, input was. So, I mean, I'd be more than happy to be the liaison for the city council.
And I'd support that.
The peer, if you want me to continue monitoring it.
Well, it's, whatever your bandwidth is, I'd love to have you on the sit, monitoring city council and, and bringing stuff back, but I want to be mindful of your bandwidth too.
Okay, okay. I'll do city council.
Oh, that's wonderful. Great. Yeah, that's really good.
I'd be happy to.
Kind of at a disadvantage because we meet on a Monday and then they meet on a Tuesday. So we're never able to immediately respond.
Commissioner Antonini and then Commissioner Kasmea Dodge?
Yeah, sorry. I was just going to say I would be happy to be the liaison to the housing commission.
Great, great. And, and we can have multiple folks, so that, that's great. I think Commissioner Sussman was exploring housing, so maybe he could join you when he comes back, get his input, but. Okay, that's great. And then Noah, can you assist? Make sure Commissioner Link Ellis is, is on the mailing list for city council and Commissioner Antonini is on the mailing list for housing?
Uh, yeah, let me make some notes.
Commissioner Kasmea Dodge, I saw your hand was up.
Yeah, I actually, that was a mistake. Yeah, yeah, no.
Um, any, any other interest in liaisons? And that's not it. If you're interested in something else, arts, whatever, bring that back, but just the ones I mentioned were, were highly recommended strategically. But you're, you're, you have a free will, whatever you want to get into.
Can I suggest that we list the ones that do not have a liaison right now so that in future meetings, uh, other commissioners like Sussman and Block and I don't know who else is missing, might want to, you know, jump in and take them. So at least they have some idea. What's possible.
What does it entail when you're a liaison? Do you write or what? What, depending on what your, the topic is and then you? What are the open, what are the open liaison positions?
I, I can list the boards and commissions. There's airport commission, architectural review board, arts commission, building and fire safety, commission on sustainability, environmental justice, environment. There's our commission, housing commission, landmarks, personnel board, planning commission, public safety reform and oversight, recreation and parks, library board. We have someone for human services commission. There's the peer corporation, downtown Santa Monica Inc., Santa Monica Travel and Tourism. Um, there's a task force, urban forest task force, there's an audit subcommittee, a clean beaches and ocean parcel tax, citizen oversight committee. There's a lot of stuff.
Thank you.
I was just going to say that the liaison is, for what I thought was just, you know, you find out, you go find out what they're doing at their meetings. If you can, you listen to the meetings. If they have anything important, you know, you bring it back while you, you know, that's, it's, it's basically pretty simple, simple. You don't have to write anything necessarily. Maybe you might want to, you know, something like that. It's not like a real big, it's just a liaison, try to keep in contact with people. That's the purpose of it, to find out what's going on with them. And, and, you know, and if we need to do anything with them.
If, you know, something on the agenda looks like there's a disability component to it, then, then we might want to go back and, and bring that to their attention. Just seeing what they're talking about, just actually getting their monthly agenda and see what they're talking about.
That's a key component.
Yeah, that's all.
You, you subscribe, you, you get on their mailing list and every month they'll send you the agenda. And I would look at it and say, oh, this has a disability component or this is of interest and bring it to the meeting.
And there you get your ad hoc project.
So Les Carr, any interest in, in ad hocks or feel free to think about it and bring it back next, next meeting?
I think housing would be interesting.
Do you want to also join Commissioner Antonini on housing?
Yeah.
Great. Noah, can you also put Commissioner Handler on their list?
Uh, yes, I'll send them the link so that they can subscribe. I can't put them in for them.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. All right, I'm going to keep it moving. Item five C disabilities commission, virtual retreat, discussion and possible actions to set goals, priorities, and long-term agenda for fiscal year 2022, 23. I hope this is just like a discussion where we can talk about kind of goals, our things we want to focus on over the next year. I was hoping a couple more folks would be here, but we'll do the best we can. And also I, I just, I was really pushing to try and do this in person, but we're, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. So I hope once we're able to safely meet in person, I want to meet you guys in person. Uh, so we can just talk about, you know, uh, within the constraints of the commission. But I think it's important we meet in person and discuss what we want to focus on. I think that's an accessibility issue as well. I think we'll be able to better strategize and plan in person, but we're still in a pandemic. But when it opens up, I, I do want to do this again in person. But these are the constraints. It's a virtual, so I just wanted to open up this agenda item to talk about goals or priorities or things you really want to focus on between now and June 30th, 2023. I have some ideas to kind of guide the, the conversation from other commissioners. Other commissions have kind of thought about the calendar and thought about times of year where it might make sense to, you know, like May is mental health month. Maybe one, in May, we want, the disabilities commission wants to do some around mental health. I believe this month is disability employment month, so in the past we've done things around that. So thinking about a, a time to kind of guide a strategy. And then just thinking about maybe just a goal, something you want to achieve over the next fiscal year or, or a priority. So something we heard earlier in the meeting was, you know, improving the accessibility of, of educational settings such as SMC. But just want to open it up. We can just, um, or, or if, Link Ellis, if you want to add some context or suggestions to get this conversation going.
Well, I, I think coming out of the pandemic, I think the number one thing for me is digital access. Because that's the one thing that has completely opened up to us, you know, learning to use Zoom, learning to use Teams and Google, yeah, and it's just, it's become a part of our life and it will probably continue to be a part of our life even when we meet in person. You know, hopefully we'll do hybrid. So I'd like to see different branches of digital accessibility. And I'm just looking here under, trying to think what this site is. It's under, no, I lost it. But accessibility tools, there are just all kinds of, you know, like we talked about having Joe Devon come
Yeah.
and speak to us and talking about, you know, the kinds of accessibility that people don't understand is out there. Because I think, given what the DOJ is going to be doing and they started doing, I think it behooves us to put a fire under city council that this is coming and this is how you do it. And Joe is one of the people, he's not the only person, but he's one of the people that we know that goes into organizations and businesses and says, this is where you need to, you need to, you need to focus on working and rehabbing, you know, I mean, I just, I was on the World Institute on Disabilities, which is a, an international board. And one of the things I didn't realize as a sighted person, that at that point, if you showed somebody a PDF that was unreadable to a blind person, there's no way to, for them to access that. And there's no way that I would ever know that. So I know that able-bodied people would not. I, I think it's almost like coming up with, I do an accessibility training for people who are about to deal with deaf and hard of hearing, attendees, patrons, whatever. So I train staffs on how to do that. So perhaps we could come up with some kind of accessibility component that is a self-guided tour that if somebody is going to have, oh, I don't know. We did it. We did a luncheon for a special Olympics, the kids one year. We did it at Annenberg. We had about 200 kids come in and it was about how we made that space accessible to all these kids. Catherine, were you on the board then? Do you remember? No? Anyway. It was one of the, one of the best events we ever had, but you know, there was a certain amount of training involved in making sure that we were able to accommodate them and get them there. So I, I, I think maybe that might be something that that we could kind of flesh out. I don't know exactly what that looks like. But I think that's something that's really doable.
Yeah, I'm hearing digital equity, digital accessibility are, are priorities. And there, there's tentacles, there's subsections to that. I'm also hearing, we, we should invite Joe Devon back to give us a 2022, 2023 update on the state of accessibility and, and his thoughts on how we can move the ship forward. Uh, but there, yeah, there, even just as you were talking, the, the barriers certain folks had with registering for, for the vaccine, if you're not sighted. But yeah, we got to make our digital spaces more accessible. And then just it evolves. There's so many new accessible technologies. Microsoft just came out with a new mouse. Microsoft just came out with a new mouse that's coming out. I just ordered it. Um, a whole new way, uh, if you don't have use of both hands, a much more accessible way to physically do keyboarding and navigating websites. So everything, and today, hearing aids are over the counter, like it's, it's constant. So we, we need an approach to be agile and be able to take things in as they come in and be proactive and not reactive.
Digital cane. Digital cane is coming out. And, you know, kits that will be able to tell people where they are and where they're going, you know, if they have disabilities.
And these wearables are getting more and more sensors that can help our health. And there's VR, there's a new headset coming out every few months. It's, it's, we need to be, uh, figuring out how to use all that stuff and make it accessible. Cause, um, yeah, so that, that sounded like a, a good priority. And then we got to flesh out, you know, how we can turn that into actions and ad hocks and speakers and, um, but that, that's definitely signed in like a, a good priority. And just one, one other thought is Culver City recently, um, actually, uh, our liaison, our staff liaison sent it to me that now their meetings are, um, have a, are hybrid. Um, so there, there's a model to do that. Um, that, that's important too. Um, I got a number of emails just about folks not being able to, um, participate. One, one of the, I, I think the lowlights of my time was, um, a previous commissioner couldn't participate. Brilliant commissioner was, was sending me information that I had to send to city council. That's just not, in 2022, that's just not okay. So, um, that, that's some, that, that, that's part of the, the spirit behind this digital equity. But, um, yeah, that can't happen anymore.
Culver City, yeah, is somebody we might want to, um, I don't know, maybe collaborate on something because they have, they're, they're much further along in the evolution of disability. I mean, their senior center has 6,000 members. If you've ever been there, and it's, and it's filled from eight in the morning till five in the afternoon with hundreds of different kinds of classes and meetings and workshops. And the person who did the disability, his office is in there. I don't know who it is now, but, um, but certainly we could, you know, learn a few things from them. I mean, we do have Ken Edwards, but that's been subcontracted out. And that is essentially our senior center, which is not very big in comparison to the size of our city. But at least digitally, we can reach more people.
Any, any thoughts from Commissioner Kazmir Dodge?
Yeah, um, it seems like, I mean, the digital, of course, I understand totally our need that we really have. That's primo all the way, everything. Um, and it seems like all this information, if we could become like a fulcrum of it, all this new stuff that's going to be coming up, that if we could organize ourselves in a way that we would be aware of it between us all and be able to get it out, um, you know, that that would be one of our functions. The digital is absolutely the most important. We're going to work on that. We're going to get these. We're going to either get committees or, or meet with committees or develop them or whatever, or, or have, you know, have our own, um, list of all the help that people can get. And I, it looks like that's, you know, like the direction that we really need. The one thing that I'm interested in sort of somehow tying in a little bit with that is people's needs. I mean, people and their personal needs. I know in our last meeting, we had somebody call in and actually, before anyway, we weren't supposed to deal with individual personal problems in the, in the commission, you know? And so, but the need is so great with people that they need this, that I would like to find some way to, for us to continue with the city's original plan of having each of us have a little, you know, or have it just the whole disability, that somebody with a question can get that question answered. You know, that they don't have to come in and tell the, you know, that it's just, okay, they have a question about schools, it goes here. If they have a question about mobility, it goes here. That kind of thing to, to, um, because that's what, and especially the digital, get that, digital divide, digital stuff out there to as many people. That's how I see what, how we should try and focus, you know, for the next year. That was all.
Thank you for that. Um, I see a hand up. I think that's you, Catherine, again. Um, want to check in, um, Commissioner Antonini, Commissioner Azariah, Commissioner Henler, any thoughts on, on things you really want to tap into this fiscal year?
Um, I just wanted to know the transportation. I know that digital equity is really important, but what about the transportation? Once they scheduled appointment, the transportation is still available? Because of the pandemic, wasn't it limited for the, for seniors and, um?
You mean the mode program?
Yeah. Is it still on and, um?
Oh, yeah, very much so. Yeah, very much so. Yes. Um, because of budget constraint, it was cut down. So, um, you know, you can't use it on Sundays or holidays. It's limited on Saturdays. I think it ends at five on weekdays. So if you wanted to come to our meeting, you could. But, um, it was so overwhelmingly popular that, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but we had, we had a budget of like $600,000 for the year for mode. And we had to dial a ride and we were into $2 million and we weren't even at the end of the first year when they discovered, wait a minute, wait, we can't, you know, so they raised the age a little bit to try and, you know, you know, put a few more constraints on it. But it definitely is. I do know that one of the problems that exists right now is, um, Lyft is our contractor. And if you, you know, if you're a part of the, you sign up for mode and you use the Lyft app on your phone and it comes and it charges you a dollar fifty unless you're under a low income. And you order it just like you order a lift. And what happens is you pay the dollar fifty and the city pays the balance. But, but you have to stay within city confines or go to UCLA or I think Kaiser.
Kaiser.
And is that it? It's just those two?
Yeah, there, there's zones around Kaiser, UCLA hospitals and VA, I think.
Okay. But it has, has to be a doctor's appointment?
By the Santa Monica, but, um, it's, it, there's so few, what happens is if you want to go from Ken Edwards to Santa Monica Hospital and you book Lyft, chances are the driver will cancel you. And they keep canceling you because the ride is too short, even though Lyft's not supposed to do that. And they keep track of it. But, um, I was trying to arrange one for my husband and, you know, after 35 minutes, they kept, I couldn't get him to arrive.
Yeah, there's a lower supply of, of drivers than when, when it was first implemented. Um, but you just have to be picked up in Santa Monica and dropped off either within Santa Monica. There's a, um, zone and then there's a zone at West LA Kaiser and a zone at UCLA Westwood and a zone at the VA. They don't check if you have an appointment, but they're assuming you do.
Right.
What's the name of the program?
Mode, M O D E.
It's mobility on demand, something.
Okay.
Noah, do you know? I can't remember.
Sorry, I don't.
I can't remember. I have to look it up.
And we've had the Blue Bus frequently present to our commission.
Hmm. And for the mode, um, so the Lyft is, so there's a separate app to call the mode?
No, what you do is you go down to the, to the, I guess it's on Fourth Street? The Tap Office that you sign up for. You have to prove you have a disability or whatever you do. You sign and they have you download the Lyft app. And what happens is mode is attached to the back of the Lyft app. So let's say you, you know, go to UCLA hospital, it's, and it's, it comes as a hu- a dollar fifty. Then you decide you want to go to Beverly Hills for lunch, then it becomes a straight Lyft drive.
Yeah.
So it only, it, the Santa Monica part only kicks in if it goes within the parameters of the Santa Monica places. But it's a wonderful, it's, it's a wonderful thing. It's just, we just don't have enough of that. I mean, in West Hollywood, if you call their service, they'll take you to, to LAX.
Hmm.
So.
Commissioner Link Ellis, um, you mentioned about the digital cane. I had no idea. This is amazing. I mean, it looks really, um, good. Like it comes with a GPS and tells exactly where to go.
I just heard about it the other day.
Yeah.
I've never seen it. I don't even know who's developing it. But apparently it was, uh, gonna be at the next disability, what's it called, Real Abilities Expo?
Uh, the, the one at the, uh, Convention Center?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, in January.
Okay.
The Abilities Expo?
Yeah.
It's in February.
You send people to it. You used to pay to send people.
Yeah, and we used to send people to the CSUN Accessibility Conference where they, they highlight the newest, latest, greatest from, from a lot of grape vendors. I, I'd like to send someone again this year.
It's not, it's not cheap, but it's, um, it's six days of wall-to-wall accessibility. It's just every conceivable company, um, there's very little on hearing loss or deafness. I would say most of it is mobility and blindness.
Wow.
It's, it's, it's fascinating when you see what's out there. And I'm just looking up digital cane and there are lots of them. So these are things that we don't know about that people could use. Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Antonini wanted to check in.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one thing I've kind of been thinking about a little bit has been, um, maybe this ties in a bit to the other mobility work, but I've just noticed that, you know, on the, some of the sidewalks in places are fairly narrow. I, you know, the, the requirements of the ADA are pretty minimal. So I'm sure that it, you know, meets ADA recommendations or every ADA requirements everywhere. But, um, you know, nevertheless, it, it might be helpful to, you know, ensure that we're sort of going beyond the, the baseline. Um, cause in, in particular, there are areas where both the sidewalk is not fairly narrow and there are also things like, you know, stop. So there are sort of posts and obstacles that you would have to navigate to, you know, go down the sidewalk. So maybe in the next year, I, I might spend some more time kind of investigating that and see, you know, there's some sort of more comprehensive kind of, uh, survey we could do. And, you know, maybe come up with some recommendations for the city on that.
That sounds great. Um, I see a hand up, uh.
Yeah, it's mine. Um, I wanted to add to that, that, uh, I'm very interested in that, of course, because I'm in a wheelchair in the sidewalks. And, uh, I have written so many time to the city, asking, telling them about, you, I couldn't even get by because the growth from a building was cutting off half the sidewalk. They never do anything. And, um, it really needs to be pushed, the sidewalk issue. And they used to have this program called City Works where you, it's an app and you could just, uh, put on the app on the sidewalk, uh, put the app and the city would know that that's where the crack was and they had to go and, and, but they don't have it anymore. But we need to definitely push that sidewalk thing and get them to, to keep the sidewalks clear. That was all. I just wanted to, to, to press on that, push on that issue.
Those are good examples. I'm hearing mobility is a, a, a key, um, priority. And we need to be real kind of specific on deliverables to, to move the needle. Uh, maybe it's an ad hoc or, I don't know.
I, I, I think with, when it comes to sidewalks, um, you know, especially when there are no curb cuts. I think maybe, uh, perhaps we can ask the, uh, Santa Monica Code Compliance Code Enforcement Bureau to send a representative to explain exactly how they enforce the law and how they, how they, uh, resolve complaints. Because I know you have to file a complaint a certain way with the city to have the city respond to it.
Yeah. And if we had that information, we could, like, uh, Commissioner Kazmir Dodge, provide that technical assistance to the community and, and try and problem solve stuff.
Yeah, I was very, I just wish, like I said, at least half a dozen times I've, because of sidewalk things and they've never done anything. So, yeah, that'd be wonderful to get them, you know, get somebody from the code enforcement.
And explain how they, you know, how they do it. And they usually learn more from us than we learn from them. But that's why you invite them.
Definitely. Um, just want to throw out, I think mental health is key this year.
Yes, yes.
We can flesh out kind of, but I, I want to have that as a priority just on the record. Uh, maybe for sure, maybe in May, um, and maybe we could have, uh, representatives from mental health organizations at least come present. And then, um, in the past, we've had, uh, panels discussing mental health issues in the community that are pertinent. Uh, we've had mental health awareness days, um, an art show with, uh, artists with, um, mental health challenges. Um, yeah, we've done other things and just other ideas is as kind of deliverables is, uh, we've written grants in the past, we've had events, we've had panels, we've created and distributed flyers for the community, um, held art shows, receptions, events at the library, survey polling stations to make sure they're accessible, um, advised on, um, making parks accessible, had campaigns. Um, so it's not just, uh, letters to city council. There, there's lots of deliverables we can do, write grants for specific things. So just wanted to throw some ideas out there.
Well, you know, I just, I know that they just at the, the whole month, you know, they've had, uh, I forget which organization at the farmer's market, just passing out literature with a table with some beautiful flowers. I always appreciate it. Even if we can't do much of anything, we can at least do little things like that. We can at least have a table, put out some things, be there, uh, pass out the information, um, you know, something like that. I always appreciate seeing them, the mental health, they're everywhere because it's so needed. I agree. It's absolutely vital.
I, I, I also think, um, that students, high school, SMC, college students, um, if you look at the, if you read the newspaper, you see so many young people taking their life right now. And at St. Monica, a, a thirty-some-year-old man with children, a great job and great man, took his life last week. Three young kids, life, just no reason. No, I mean, no, 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 nothing. He just took his life. But I just think there's a lot going on as a result of the pandemic, which is still winding down. But, and I also think that's been a clog in the wheel of getting things done too for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think inflation is a big factor of people losing hope. So I'm not sure if there is a, we can pass out those, the number to call if they get into that, um, you know, they need help. Um.
That's it. Cards, anything. And yeah, great. Even if, I mean, anything we can do to just be there, pass out a card, say hello. I mean, with anything for the, it's overwhelming, the state of the mental health everywhere, I think, just overwhelming. And, and people are really, really suffering.
They're just making, making sure people are. They're just making, making sure people are aware of nine eight eight and the warm lines if they just want to chat. Like, we need to make people aware of things that exist, um, and how to access care. Cause sometimes it, it can take some time from the time you request it. It can take a week or two to get, you know, a clinician or, but in the meantime, can you talk to somebody knowing the, if it's an emergency, who to call?
Yeah.
Just being aware of all that.
What's the new number? Is it nine nine eight or nine eight?
Nine eight eight is, is the, the new number. It used to be eight hundred number and it just switched to nine eight eight. But we need to, yeah, and again, I, I hope, I want us to have more of a, a physical presence just in the community like we did in the past. I just, because of the pandemic, that's been a barrier, but being at the Fourth of July events, those wellness events, I'm at the homeless count, but, um, just, uh, as things get in person, just, you know, having information.
I, we went to that. My husband and I went to it. And that's a place where we would have been, it would have been great to have a table. But again, the same thing, we don't have a budget, so we don't, we don't know where our money would come from to do something. I know we're supposed to submit it and then they'll approve it, but, you know, you know.
Yeah, I think that's both a priority and a goal is I want us to have a, a physical presence and, and we can ask Maggie or, or No Way to help us make a request for whatever the, the fee is to have a table and some, some printouts of important info. But we, we need to be, have a, a physical presence as soon as it's safe to do so.
And I would like them to have also things like printed because there is a list of, uh, you could go, anybody that had, wants to talk to a therapist, whatever, it's free, there's a list. It says it's free. You want to talk to somebody, go here. They never have to have a problem about seeing anybody. You know, getting all that information out is just like with the digital stuff, you know?
Commissioner Henler?
Yeah, I was gonna say two places that are pretty active right now are, um, one's called BetterHelp and, um, they assign you like a therapist and it just tell, uh, it's usually just by phone. And then there's one called, there's a lot sprouting up, but there's Blue Moon Senior Counseling. That's, uh, also, you know, over the telephone. Um, and then NAMI has a, has their own, they have family to family and they have where they instruct you on how to live with your loved one who have mental illness. And then there's, um, that's NAMI and, um, the, there's a lot of warm lines. Um, the problem with those, sometimes those are, um, hard to get through unfortunately. Have to like leave a message. Some are run by peers. Some are run by, um, you know, retired therapists or, I don't know. But that's, I,
Yeah.
That's, I'm, I'm interested in, um, the peer advocacy, um, something called Project Return, which is, um, um, so you, uh, I already have a, a peer advocacy certificate, but I'm going to do this other Project Return one and, um, it, you sort of give back and how cathartic because you're, because what you're bringing to people, you understand and you also, you can bring it to them and in a way that they may not get it from somebody like an LCSW or, um, or a psychologist.
Yeah, maybe.
What was the name of that documentary that was produced by Ken Burns Company?
Oh, I, I know the, the PBS one.
Yeah, I, I went to the name with those people. It was actually Santa Monica and they showed some of the clips of people in it.
Was it a, um, was it a, a theater thing or was it a?
No, it was a, a documentary.
Uh, two parts on PBS.
Yeah.
Oh, a documentary.
It was produced by Ken Burns. It was not directed by him, but it was, it came out of his company. And, uh, what was the name of it? It was, it was very compelling. That might be something really good for mental health awareness month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as, as Commissioner Henler was saying, there's, there's a, a big movement in the past year around peer support services, um, some big legislation passed where there's a, a number of places to get peer certification, where you can be a professional in the field and bill Medi-Cal. It's a Medi-Cal billable services. So there, the peer workforce is going to start getting bigger over the next year.
You can, you can actually become a case manager and get, yeah, get like a salary and which is what I want to do.
And there's exams and, and it's a certification and there's CEUs, just like, you know, with the Board of Behavioral Sciences, there's a whole infrastructure. And, and the key for that too is, is there's a shortage of clinicians with disabilities. So maybe, you know, being able to, sometimes it's helpful to, to get, uh, support from someone who has the same experience as you. There's some data around that, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so maybe peers can, can help us get more culturally competent care.
Yeah. They had something called, um, well, there was a, they, the name of the play was The Manic Monologue and they did it at UCLA. And, um, well, it was actually came out of Stan- Stanford and it was the, the man who started it with, with, um, they were both students in the, in the psychology department. And so they did all this research and got, and, and wrote this play and then, um, and it was really amazing. It was just so, so well done. And, um, they did it, I don't, I think they did it back east maybe. And they came to LA, they did it back east and they did it maybe in Stanford, I guess they did it there too. Called The, The Manic Monologue. And interesting, because there are similarities between that, from one diagnosis to another, that, I mean, to, from one person to another person, you know? It's not all just like random. There's, there, there can be common threads through each diagnosis. And, um.
I just want to say, I looked it up. The name of it is Hiding in Plain Sight, Youth Mental Illness.
Oh my God.
Yeah, I decided. Yeah, I decided.
Something with mental illness?
Yeah, youth.
Youth mandolin.
Yeah, if you look it up, it's on YouTube, but it's called Hiding in Plain Sight.
Hiding in plain.
It aired June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. And they, and they followed the stories. And there's one little boy, this adorable little boy, like eight years old. And he just told his mother, I don't want to live anymore. And what does, what does a mother say to a child who says, I don't want to live? I mean, it's just, and he apparently became part of NAMI's, uh, national convention. And he came to, um, Nevada and, you know, originally they didn't want to expose him because they come from a very small town and then it would expose the fact that, you know, this child was, you know, at risk. But he came out and he said, if I can help one person, then it's worth it.
Yeah.
Really out of the mouth of babes. It's just really, really compelling. And again, like you say, it's all peers.
And family is a, a really big component. Like, if you have like two people with the same diagnosis, but you have, um, one, um, one family that's very nurturing and exciting and uh, wise. And then you have like another child who's like, who's living in like poverty level and are, they're barely getting by, can hardly afford shoes. It's, it's not, they're not going to be as objective with their own behavior and their own struggles. They're, but when you, the, the more intense, the more kind of, um, hands-on the family is, I think, the, the better the outcome. And the more likely that somebody's gonna, um, be, you know, revert and, and, and get better and, and better.
But th- those are great insights. Um, some good, good, good conversations. I'm hearing definitely, uh, one of our priorities is, is mental health and, and we gotta, um, have some efforts around that. Um, and, and it sounds like May is a good target to, um, do an activity or, or some deliverables. And I'm hearing just one thing is, again, uh, making people aware of things that exist of nine eight eight, how to call DMH, of these warm lines of NAMI. Other things I thought is your insurance sometimes has apps, that app for telehealth or, um, just helpful apps and just knowing how to access those through your insurance or how to make an appointment. If you have Medi-Cal or Medicare, just giving people information so they can take advantage of the resources they have and find things if, if, um, that are out there that they may not be aware of.
Yeah. And getting them benefits, that's a big one.
Yeah.
Because benefit, it's, I mean, there's, there's so much more paperwork now than there used to be. And you kind of have to be a, a whiz at it, like in order to, to do it. It's, 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 it's quite amazing, like what these benefits and if they can get people benefits and if they can keep, stay but keeping them. There are more deadlines, there's more, just, um, so much paperwork.
And that, I, that kind of ties into some of our digital equity is like a lot of the paperwork you staffed to do in person at the Department of Public Social Services, you can now do on benefits Cal on your phone. So can we help people have the skills and be comfortable um, on, on how to do that paperwork and manage their benefits and get connected to benefits as easily as possible?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think it's a socio-economic problem as well. The benefits, like probably more middle-class people are getting benefits, but more, um, a, a lower division of, of socio-economic. Um, thing is, well, what am I trying to say? I'm trying to say that it's not fair because, um, you're, the people that really need the help a lot are unable to complete the paperwork or will miss a deadline or something like that. And it's very, it's unfair.
Maybe we can have someone like from Legal Aid or someone who, who's good at helping with benefits, stop by and, and see how we can help people get support, especially people with disabilities get support if they have a challenge or need support to fill out the paperwork to get the benefits they need.
Yeah. Where would they bring the, where would they, for, I mean, set up a table somewhere and like, is that what you're?
I think one would just be like, oh, what's the, the organization in Santa Monica that people who need help can call to get support that has capacity?
Oh.
Yeah, like West Side. Ask them, call West Side or something like that, yeah.
Star Matrix? Step, uh, uh, step one second?
Um, like there, there's. Yeah, there, there's, there's Saint Joseph, but, um, and there's OPCC, but maybe it's someone, yeah, just we, I think we need a better sense of just what's out there and how to, you know, just navigating what resources are out there is a challenge for folks in Santa Monica. So, uh, having resources to people and a decision tree to help them, you know, advocate for themselves. Um, but it, it's hard to navigate what's out there.
There's a woman who works at Legal Aid, her, uh, Susan Millman. I don't know if she, if she works with, um, with benefits though, but, I mean, and if you're part of DMH, you, that's like, they have, they, they'll give you a case manager who can help you navigate that too. So there's, and then, um, there's a law firm that, um, covers that type of situation and it's, um, just, uh, I can't remember the name of it though. It's, uh, um, um, I can, now, at the next meeting, I'll, 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 I'll look it up and bring it.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I, I just want to circle back where, uh, and kind of get back to just, um, anyone have some pressing goals or priorities or, or things they really want to focus on this, this fiscal year between now and June twenty-three and, just wanted to, to bring that back. And, um, we talked about mental health, um, digital equity, we talked about mobility, um, any other major topics we really want to focus on?
What about getting people out and voting and just getting people out and voting and sending Trump to the Hill?
It's kind of too late. It's too late to do anything on the vote component, unfortunately. We did something several years ago about making sure that voting places were accessible and we actually had somebody go out and check all of them. And, you know, like there were like the League of, what is it, the League of Women's, uh, downtown, got them bounced because they're a landmark, so they don't have to be accessible. So there were, you know, and little houses that had garages that weren't accessible. So, but to do that, you need at least six months' lead time and the election's twenty-one days away. So we could do that for twenty-twenty-four, but.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's a long-term agenda item for twenty-twenty-four. Let's circle, let's keep that on the part.
You could hand out little things to people. I don't know at the bus stops and stuff. I don't think people know what they're gonna do. They're gonna get up to the polls and they're gonna, they're gonna like look here and look there and then, and say, I don't know what I'm doing and just.
Oh, we'll bring that up for the, the twenty-four November election. I think that's, that's some, that's always been a priority. Maybe we can do something about it.
Yeah. Um, Kamala was in, um, Midtown today. I heard she was at the, um, the Nate Holden, Nate Holden Theater, I guess. Where she lives.
The, the, um, the places to, the mail-in ballots have went out and the places to drop off, there's like one at Virginia Park and there's other ones around the city. So that's something we can do is just let people know, um, if it's safer, more convenient to drop off ballots, um, where, where they can find a local one and, uh, where, where local polling place is and, um, make them aware that there are ADA accommodations. Um, it can be kind of cumbersome, but people just should be aware that if they go to a polling place, they can get help.
Right.
But, but that's a good one for twenty-twenty-four.
It can't be within like one hundred feet of the line or something.
Yeah, there, there's some constraints around. Yeah, there, there's some constraints around if, if you're, uh, for a candidate or something, but, um.
Do you know if someone makes sure that homeless people, um, population gets to vote?
They have an address, I'm sure they do, and Santa Monica, from what I understand, gives them mailboxes, correct?
If they're, I think if they're registered voters within, you know, follow, follow the voter registration protocols, they're, um, eligible to vote, everyone's eligible to vote. Um, so if, if they, that's a good question, that's maybe something we could ask the city or ask, uh, one of our, like, uh, OPCC or Saint Joseph. For example, if they, a resident wants to vote and they use them as an address, are they eligible to vote? Um, I, I don't know, but that's a good question.
Can, can they just walk in and the voting booth and just tell them that they're not registered? No, they can't, okay?
Uh, I know everyone can vote, just the thing I'm, I'm unclear about is do they vote, uh, absentee? Or are they voting within the city of Santa Monica or their last address that was official? Th- these are good questions, but my understanding is if you're registered to vote, uh, you can vote just what address they use to determine which ballot you get. Um, that's, that's a good question, that's, that's something we should get clarity on before a future election. Cause I've worked polling places before and we've had everybody vote, but, um, some folks would have to do, um, absentee. Um, so I, I don't know. Yeah, provisional, yeah, that's, that's the, that's the correct word, thank you.
Because I noticed a lot of people from under, um, by the freeway, they were all gone like, um, two or three days ago. So I assumed they were moved in the shelter, but if they go to the shelter, do they? I don't know, I mean, I, did they let them vote, um?
Was that on Centinela by any chance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's cause President Biden was going through, so the security cleared everyone out, but I don't know where they got.
Where did they go? I don't know, cause like changing weather and stuff, I mean, they're, I was assuming they were moved to some other place or shelter.
I know the ballot you get, I think, is based on like the last address you have in voter registration. But, yeah, that's something we should, we should learn more about.
Yeah. Okay.
I think just access to healthcare and mental health care is a key thing. That's a big goal, just making sure people get ac- access to the care that they can. And that's telehealth, that's, um, just being able to advocate for your own healthcare. I don't know how to, I have to think about how to turn that into a deliverable for our commission, but, um, getting access to quality care is, is always going to be an issue for this community.
Yeah.
Knowing what your insurance covers, getting your maximum benefits, so you get the best doctors, specialists.
Yeah.
Knowing when Medicare offers this or that, or adds this and that, or how to lower your costs or make sure you get all the things you're entitled to.
Oh, don't even mention that, that's just a scam. That is a scam.
It's a challenge to navigate.
Yeah, access is always. With, with the, the, uh, uh, the Star, Star Trek Leonard Nimoy, no, um, what's the, who's the one who does the commercials for, for, um, Medicare A and B or Medicare Advantage? When really you should just stay with what you, you have, you know? Very, it's very deceiving.
Yeah, I think we, we can do a job in making sure people make informed decisions and make the best choice and have high-quality information to make that choice instead of being persuaded.
It's, it's very deceptive, cause like you'll, you'll get an email, you know, it'll be like, it'll, they'll say something, um, to the effect of, well, um, if you take, if you get this, uh, colonial life policy, you'll be getting a hundred percent back. And it's like, basically, it's completely false. And, um, and when the, when the government, the US government puts out a thing that says, don't believe people, people are impersonating people from the government, don't be fooled. I mean, all this deception going on because of the internet and, um, you know, caused all this deception.
Maybe when we, we do kind of a in-person booth, we have information just on, uh, not being susceptible to scams or identifying scams and, and how to find high-quality information on a variety of topics for the disabled community, including ones about healthcare.
Yeah, that's a good idea, really good idea. Cause people don't really talk about it in public. I mean, you might get into a discussion about civics with somebody on the street, but that doesn't mean that person's gonna have your point of view. And so a place where, a little area where you could, you could have, um, you know, things, things, things that could help you and possibly save you from getting scammed, um.
We can't do that, the Disability Com- Commission can't do that. And, um, you know, that's something, that's, that's something that we have to work on, but we cannot get involved in these personal issues. I'm tired, really. I mean, the, the, if everybody brought their personal issues is what they want solved, we'd never get anything done. I mean, you know, it's just not, it's just not part of our commission, it's not what we should be doing. And, uh, I don't want to listen to it anymore. So if we're gonna continue like this, I'll bow out.
I was merely chiming in with Mr. Elliott about scam. That, that seems like a public issue to me, um.
Um, so then, we just, we talked about some of the goals we definitely want to address this fiscal year. We got, um, uh, digital equity, which has a lot of things under that umbrella. We got mental health, we got mobility, we talked about a couple options, access to quality care and I think something around education. So we have like five big buckets. And maybe when we get the full commission, some more members, we can kind of flush out those buckets. Um, but I think we got a lot for, for this item. Um, so I'm, I want to move ahead to just kind of thinking about in the short term, thinking of who we want to come to our next, uh, meetings. So I want to move on to five D future agenda planning, is that okay?
I'm gonna have to hang up in a little while, I have to get a delivery. So I'll just say goodbye now and, um, you know, um, I'm sorry if I offended somebody, but at least I had the, the, at least I had the, at least I said something. Okay, I wasn't too scared. All right, thank you, and I'll hang up. Okay. Thank you.
So I'm thinking our, our next meeting will be the first Monday of December. Um, it's pretty close and we have that big election coming up. So I think it's good to get a sense of the results of the election and all those measures in Santa Monica. Um, does December eighth work for folks or, or the first Monday in December?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna tentatively suggest that.
Okay, first Monday, okay.
And that, that's generally what our regular meetings are. We just, because of the pandemic, we've kind of jumped around, but it's, when we get on a regular, uh,
Yeah.
low, it's gonna be the first Monday of the month. So I want to get in that habit starting in December.
Okay, if we could get somebody to come speak.
You, that, that's, uh, one, one person, I, I want from, someone from the city to give a summary of the election results and, and their impact on people with disabilities. Um, like there's the, the rent control one, there's a number of measures that have some, some big implications and we'll have the results. So I was hoping someone could give us like a high-level summary, is that of interest to folks?
I don't know who that person would be, but.
Yeah, I think I have to flesh it out, but, um, we've generally had folks from the city talk about legislation.
Would that be like city manager staff or? City attorney staff? I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah. I wanted to get like a summary of, of what passed and its implications and also maybe speak to some of the, the things that go into play that the governor signed on January one and their impacts on people with disabilities.
Right.
Um.
I think, yeah, I just don't know who.
And I, I think we, we got to be specific, like there, you know, hundreds of laws come into play March, uh, uh, January one, but focus like, you know, I want to know the results of the rent control measure or whatever measures that are really key that have come up, um, that are gonna start January one, that was one idea, um. Well, what, what do you thinks folks, uh, think about, uh, who we should invite for December? As a guest speaker from the city?
I, I would suggest somebody, you know, I don't know who is going to be, well, who's left on city council?
Well, no, December, or, well, no, November eighth or ninth.
There's certain people who are turning out, who are not running.
Yeah, I think that would even be a helpful update about what, what, uh, you know, who won and what, you know? Just so we're, we're all starting with knowing where things are, knowing what our baseline is moving forward. Cause midterms and four-year elections are like a good re, you know, reset to start the baseline and, and move forward and get on the same page. We've kind of been winging it a little bit.
I'm thinking.
I, I know in, maybe, you know, January on, I want to invite city council members to our meetings. They, they go to like, uh, Councilmember De La Torre was at a housing commission meeting I was at. Um, that's, that's what I definitely want to happen, but, um, we'll, we'll know who to invite after November, we'll know, we'll know who our options are.
Okay. Do you think Maggie would have any suggestions as who we might approach? On the city, I, I just don't know who on the city level.
Yeah, I think, uh, we can ask Noe, Noe and Maggie. I think they might be able to give us a summary of what passed, but some of the analysis, I'm not sure.
Well, if they could just suggest people, we could always call them ourselves.
Yeah, well, maybe that's something we, when we have a planning meeting, we can figure out a better target.
Right, right, right. But I think it's, I think December's the perfect time to do it.
Yeah, um, and narrow down what to focus on. I really want to focus on things that tie to some of our goals, priorities and long-term goals. If there's anything around mental health or digital equity or benefits, anything we've talked about, um, that's, that's coming into play. Um, and I'm thinking maybe after that, we should invite Joe Devon again.
Definitely, definitely.
Any, any pressing, uh, guest speakers from the city, um, commissioners think we should get on our queue?
Again, I, I, that's a question that I would answer after the election. I want to see who's left standing.
Yeah, I don't know many, um.
We're a contentious group right now, so I, I don't know. Everything's changed.
Yeah, no, December eighth will be a good reset for us to like, you know, the dust will settle, be like, this is what it is. And it's, maybe this was a month too early, this, this, uh, but we got it started, we, this was a good conversation and we, we can keep it going.
Right, 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 right.
Um, but, but let me just recap, uh, someone, uh, inviting someone to just give a summary of November, what's pertinent. Uh, Joe Devon around digital equity accessibility and someone from the city council, TBD. Um, any, any other ideas around, uh, potential speakers in, uh, in this fiscal year?
Well, I would really like to see if we can get the, uh, hiding in plain sight people to come.
That would be interesting, yeah.
What do you, what is, what do you mean hiding in planes?
The PBS, uh, that's the title of the PBS film on mental health, youth mental health.
The youth mental health.
Okay. So what is they doing about it and, you know, homeless issue?
Maybe, maybe some mental health-related, uh, speakers.
I mean, we've had the, the, uh, the triage from, you know, the police, come and discuss how the police, the paramedics and the social worker go out to meet with at-risk, you know, homeless people and try to get men.
And Santa Monica's part of Service Area Five, so maybe we could have DMH Service Area Five focus. People come by and talk about what's available in our geographic area.
Yeah.
But definitely someone my, mental health-related, um, maybe even a couple of folks.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe like a benefits-type person, disability benefits-type person.
I really want to, you know, concentrate on at the beginning, you know, the digital equity.
Yeah.
I really want to spend time on that.
And, and, uh, as soon as, I'll, I'll get that letter out and you'll, you'll get BCC'd and then I'll send it again after they induct the new folks. But, you know, we'll, we'll figure out someone December to give us a summary of, of what went on at the November election and maybe, maybe add something on it. Um, I'm drawing a, a little bit of a blank, what else to talk about, um.
Anything new? Anything new, they have new agenda or something that they're deducting, especially cutting off things, um, when it comes to transportation or anything burning issue that they have, I guess. I don't know what's the budget is, but, you know, usually new people come and they start to cut off benefits and stuff, given the inflation, so I guess we can look at that.
Yeah, that, um, Nancy, as, as the ad hoc for city council, maybe as things, agenda items come in that might inspire who we want to bring in.
Yes, right.
We might have to course correct on our priorities. Um, cause you know, there's, you know, based on the economic situation.
I do, I really agree with Nancy, the, the, no matter how many things we get involved with, boy, I wouldn't mind if all of our things were just the digital. It's just so bloody important that nothing, it's like underneath everything, underneath everything we want to do is the digital. So even if we have lots and lots of things with the digital, to me, it's not gonna be too much cause I need all that and more and more and more and more and more.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm, I'm big on we need hybrid, um, and especially since Culver City's doing it and, and the city council, like, that was like a big.
For a while.
They, they, they were gonna like, uh, explore how much it costs and what technology they need and that was months ago, so, uh, um, that's something we, we should circle back on and, and it's in our letter. So hopefully they'll, they'll respond to that, cause it's, it's been a long time. They, the technology is there to do hybrid and the knowledge, I, I don't know what the holdup is.
I, I just think they get focused on other things, that we have to keep reminding them that we're there.
And I, I want to just open it one last time on. And I, I want to just open it one last time on, on future agenda, we, we have a number of ideas, lots of interest in, in digital. Um, an update on legislation and uh for our December first Monday in December. Um, and, and we have a lot of parking lot ideas to circle back on and obviously we'll be fluid based on what's going on in city council on economic factors. Uh, but just one, one, wanted to open up one last time, any, anybody have anything else? All right, I'm, I'm gonna move to um public input, uh, uh, agenda item ten. Um, I don't think I see anyone in the public. Um, I don't. Um, all right, I'm gonna move to a draw in the meeting, um, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, uh, all right, a roll call vote, Commissioner Lingellis?
Yes.
Uh, Antonini?
Yes.
Uh, uh, Kazmei Dodge?
Yes.
Azaria?
Yes.
Elliot, yes, um, all right, that closes our meeting, thanks everybody so much. Be, be on the lookout for the, the letter, it's gonna go out twice, um, very soon, you'll get the first one. Um, thanks everybody for being here and, and just, uh, the, we had some good conversation, not ending here. Um, and again, we're gonna, as soon as it's safe to meet in person, we're gonna do this again in person, no matter where we are. Um, where things are, we gotta do this in person. Um, but I'm gonna stop the recording, thanks again, everybody, have a good one.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.